Good evening, welcome to the Township of Hillsborough Planning Board Public Meeting for December 12th, 2019. Would you all please join me in a salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, also known as the Sunshine Law. Notice of the 2019 Annual Meeting Schedule has been provided to the officially designated newspapers, the township clerk, and posted on the bulletin board at the Hillsborough Township Municipal Complex. Roll call, please.
Mr. Weinstein, Mr. Debb, Mr. Santaromita, and Chair Sarachi are absent tonight. Mr. Scobbo?
Here.
Mr. Peason?
Present.
Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Your name is Leponti?
Here.
Mayor Delcor?
Here.
Vice Chair Julia?
Here. Okay, next up on the agenda would be the consideration of meeting minutes. The first set of meeting minutes are from June 6th, 2019.
Mr. Chairman, the members eligible are yourself, Mr. Wagner, Mr. Leponti, and Mr. Peason.
I'll move the minutes, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second this.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Peason?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Your name is Leponti?
Yes.
Vice Chair Julia?
Yes. Okay, next up on the agenda would be the Hillsborough Township Meeting Minutes from July 25th, 2019.
Mr. Chairman, all of the members present at the meeting this evening are eligible but you.
I wasn't at that meeting?
No. I must have missed it.
I'll move that.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Scobbo?
Yes.
Peason?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Your name is Leponti?
Yes.
Mayor Delcor?
Yes.
Next up, excuse me, next up on the agenda we have consideration of resolution, which would be the Somerset County YMCA Hillsborough Branch be filed 19 PB-16 SPV.
Eligible members, Mr. Chairman, are yourself, Mr. Wagner, Mr. Peason, and Mr. Scobbo.
Do we need any discussion on this, or just a motion?
Take a motion to introduce, to adopt, and then if there's any discussion.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Scobbo?
Yes.
Mr. Peason?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Vice Chair Julia?
Yes. Okay, next on the agenda would be any planning board business. I don't see any business. So, next on the agenda would be business from the floor. So, with this, we'll open, we'll have a motion to open it to the floor for anything that's not on the agenda tonight, so if there's anything anyone from the public wants to talk about beside what's on the agenda for tonight.
I don't think we need a motion.
You don't need a motion?
We don't need a motion.
Don't need one.
Okay.
Seeing none.
Seeing none. Okay, seeing none, then we can move on, which would be the first application, which would be Green Village Brookhaven Lofts/Hotel, file 19-PB-17-MSPV. Counselor?
Good evening, members of the Board. My name's Mike O'Grohanic. I'm an attorney at Savo Shaw Gillespie O'Grohanic &amp; Fisher. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Group 206 Enterprises LLC, for the Green Village Brookhaven Lofts and Hotel. Amended site plan and subdivision application for a project previously approved under application number 11 PB-11SR and application 16 PB-12 MJV. We're here tonight for an amended application proposed to eliminate the 20,000 square feet of retail space that was previously approved and replace that with an extended stay executive suite hotel. The prior approval was for 130-room hotel, and this application proposes 105-unit hotel. The retail component of the prior approved approvals is proposed to replace with 130 residential dwellings consisting of 104 market rate and 26 co-apartment units. The remaining portions of the previously approved project remain essentially as unchanged, and in fact, as you know, much of this development has constructed and occupied. The associated recreational facilities, the amenities, and the project shall remain unchanged. This application proposes locating the hotel, the hotel that was previously located on the rear portion of this lot towards the front of the lot, adjacent or closer to Route 206 North, and to locate five two-to-three-story residential buildings to the rear of the lot where the hotel was originally located in the prior approvals. The project site access driveway and residential associated recreational facilities and amenities will remain unchanged. As part of the site plan for the changes and amendments, a modification to the previously approved subdivision layout is also proposed. Specifically, Lot 30.01 is proposed to be further subdivided so that a new reconfiguration of the extended stay suite hotel is located on its own lot, separate from the residential, on proposed Lot 30.04. And again, the proposed 130 new residential dwelling units in those five two-to-three-story buildings would remain on the existing Lot 30.01, as well as a small portion of 30.01 to be added to existing Lot 30.02. By way of relief, one new bulk variance has been identified based upon the comments of Mr. Maskey's September 24th, 2019 memorandum regarding parking on the reconfigured Lot 30.01, where 239 parking spaces are required and 150 parking spaces are provided. However, it must be noted that, in a way, this is what we would call a technical variance based upon the internal lots where we propose cross-access easements to reach the different parking fields. The required parking for the overall tract is in accordance with the ordinance requirements, and this is similar to a prior variance that was granted by the planning board for the existing Lot 30.02 under application 16 PB-12 MJV. Similar to that application, as I indicated, cross-access easements will be provided for the shared access driveway parking and the other in-site improvements for the internal lots within the overall tract. The second relief necessitated by this application is the parking spaces regarding non-residential uses, 10-by-18 with a two-foot overhang versus 10-by-20 feet with a 25-foot wide access aisle versus 10-by-20 with a 30-foot access aisle as required per the Ordinance Code, Section 188.68-68. The parking for the proposed residential uses, however, does comply with the RSI S-NJAC 5:21. The third issue of relief is requested, as previously requested and granted with the prior application, is a waiver for a loading space for the hotel where none is proposed for the hotel and one would be required under 188-68 subsection 1. Of course, the application also proposes infrastructure necessary for the development, including walkways, parking lots, landscaping, stormwater management facilities, utilities, signage, and lighting. The subject property is located in the GV zone. The overall tract is approximately 50 acres in size, again, much of which is already constructed and operational. The subdivided lot is where the five apartment buildings and hotel are proposed, is 8.41 acres in size. A variance is also required for the sign. We had proposed a sign that's mounted on a 90-degree angle for visibility, and under the ordinance, signs with a greater than 45-degree angle are considered two signs where only one sign is permitted. The application also seeks architectural and site design overlay zone waivers consistent with the overall design of the project for tree islands in the parking lot, variations to the trash enclosure requirements, crosswalks, signage, illumination, and planting, and perhaps pitch-of-the-roof roof materials, facade treatment, and facade materials, again, which is consistent with the other buildings that are already constructed, and our architect will touch on those issues. With me tonight I have Mike Ford from Van Cleef Engineering Associates. He, of course, is our civil engineer for the project. Dave Minow, our architect. Art Bernard, our professional planner. We also have Doug Poliniak from Dean &amp; Dolan, our traffic engineer. And we have Jeff Hiller here on behalf of the applicant to answer any questions if necessary. In compliance with the Divisal Land Use Law, notice has been served. Affidavits of publication and certified mailing to abutting property owners has been submitted to the Board, and unless there are any legal questions, I would ask Mr. Ford to be sworn in and to explain the site plan.
Do you have any testimony you give tonight? Is it true, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Could you state, explain your name for me?
Michael Ford, F-O-R-D.
We will accept.
32 Brower Lane, Van Cleef Engineering.
Just for the purpose of the record, Mr. Ford, though you are a regular.
Yes.
Could you indicate your qualifications?
Yes, I'm a licensed engineer for almost 30 years here before this Board, numerous times. Was the person in charge and supervised the preparation of the plans for the application this evening.
We will accept your credentials.
Thank you. First, I'll just introduce the exhibits. We already passed out a stapled, reduced copy of what I have on the screen, four illustrations. The first illustration is a colorized version of the previously approved plan, so that's the project as approved and under construction today.
Will we mark this A1?
I think we did.
We pre-marked it A1.
Yeah.
And for the purpose of the record, Mr. Ford, can you indicate what A1 represents in terms of, other than you've indicated what is the approved plan, when was this document created?
This is last revised July 30th, 2013. This is the overall site plan for the Green Village Project, Lot 30, Block 141.
Is this pre or post the subdivision application?
This would be pre the subdivision application. The next exhibit I've just changed to is the current proposed plan, and on which we've highlighted with darker beige the new buildings to be constructed in a lighter beige, all of the remaining buildings that are under construction. And you see highlighted here basically a triangular-shaped eight-plus-acre portion of the site, which is highlighted in yellow, which is the existing Lot 30.01, which will be further subdivided, as Mr. O'Grohanic indicated in the introduction, into another lot, basically to create, again, consistent with the prior approval, a separate lot for the non-residential uses, which is the hotel, and the residential uses, which is the remaining lands and the apartments.
So, this is being marked A2. Can you indicate the...
That's the overall site plan, last revised October 11th, 2019. It's a combination of sheets within that site plan, including the proposed landscaping that's part of the site plan set.
Thank you.
And then, what I'd like to go to next would be, I think, what is most helpful illustration, and this is a new illustration we prepared, which basically combines those first two illustrations, which is, on the left is the previously approved portion of the site plan, which is the first sheet, the eight-acre portion, or the triangular-shaped portion, and shows the configuration of the extended-stay hotel and the retail buildings. A total of 10 buildings were proposed with access off of Wooddrift, which has direct access to Route 206, the parking associated with that, and then beyond that area, the apartment buildings, which are in the light beige color. And then, on the right side of this illustration is the amended proposed site plan with a configuration of five new apartment buildings in the area, which was essentially previously proposed for the extended-stay buildings, and then the new hotel building up where, closer to Route 206, where the retail was proposed. It's an L-shaped building. We've maintained basically the same access to this area from Wooddrift out close to Route 206, and where there were actually two access points off of Wooddrift previously proposed, we're just now reducing that to just one, and then we have that connection to the rear portion of the site that is the residential apartments under construction.
This is A3. Can you indicate?
Yes. Yeah, that's A3, and it's an exhibit basically combining A1 and A2 in the area of interest, which is the amended eight-acre portion of the site.
And it was created for this evening's hearing.
And what I'd like to highlight, just overall, the site has two access driveways to Route 206, one being a signalized intersection. None of those improvements along Route 206 are to be changed as part of this application. They're all existing, currently functioning, and servicing the existing residents within the portions of the apartment buildings that are currently occupied, as well as construction access, so that remains unchanged. And actually, part of the overall traffic related to this amended plan is a de minimis five trips increase in the peak AM hour and a reduction in the peak PM hour of over 100 trips. That was part of a traffic report that was submitted by Dolan &amp; Dean Associates. And since there are no improvements or changes to the Route 206 improvements, there's no DOT permit required as part of this amendment. With regards to other outside agencies, we've already gone back to the Delaware, Raritan, Canal Commission, the Somerset County Planning Board, and the Soil Erosion and Setoning Control District, and have secured basically approvals from all three of those agencies, albeit the Delaware and Raritan Canal Commission, as you know, doesn't issue their final approval until they receive verification that the townships approve the application. But as part of the Delaware and Raritan Canal Commission's review, they include a specific analysis and review of the stormwater management facilities, and found no issue with what's being proposed as part of this amended application. And then, with regards to stormwater management, there is an existing detention basin between the two existing access driveways on Route 206 that was overdesigned. The change from the previously approved plan to this currently proposed plan is a de minimis increase in impervious coverage, less than a tenth of an acre, but because the existing stormwater management facilities are overdesigned, they can accommodate that de minimis increase. All the runoff from this proposed developed area, it drains down into this existing detention basin between the two existing site access driveways and onto the north along Route 206 for discharge, so there's no runoff directed to any of our existing neighbors to the south. No drainage patterns changed as a result of this amended application. With regards to landscape and lighting...
Mike, can I stop you?
Yeah.
Because I know we talked at the Environmental Commission the other night. We said the stormwater management plan was approved by the DRCC, but it's amended, and it'll be...
Right, and we made a submittal to the DRCC at the same time we made application to the town for this amended application. They've already reviewed our amended application, and the only comments they have at this juncture are, "Well, our stormwater is adequate." All they're looking for is proof of township approval, a proof of county approval, basically administrative items.
So, like, a redo of their authorization?
Right. That's what, it's a standard. They review it just like any other application, but what I'm telling you is, they've reviewed the stormwater management plans with this specific amended application and have found no issue with it.
Okay.
We had a buffer proposed along our southerly border, a part of the previously approved plans. We've made no change to that. We've maintained the buffer between the proposed development and our nearest neighbors. In fact, the limits of disturbance from the previously approved plan to this current plan are unchanged, and in fact, most of this area has actually already been disturbed as part of the ongoing construction at the site. What we feel are some enhancements with this change in the plan, certainly with respect to our immediate neighbors to the south, or that there was some parking in a driveway, which I'm highlighting now, on the previously approved plan, rate in back of and servicing the extended-stay hotel, whereas we've eliminated that driveway connection in the proposed plan, maintained a green area, and it's, I'll say, less activity-intensive outdoor use as opposed to parking. Now, it's the apartment buildings closest to our neighbors. The parking for the apartments is proposed to the north of the apartments. There is existing parking to the east of the new five parking, or five apartment buildings, which will be used and shared amongst all the residents. So, while Mr. O'Grohanic indicated there's a technical variance for parking, that's only because of the subdivision line, which is a matter of separating out the non-residential from the residential and providing for financing opportunities for this new section, if you will, of the apartment complex. But as with the prior subdivision, which also had a similar parking variance, there would be a blanket easement where, obviously, the shared parking and site amenities and access driveways and other utilities that are basically commonly used by all the residents in the apartments would continue. I'm pausing and see if anybody's listening.
So, Michael, with regards to the parking, so the parking that's around the, we'll call it, the four buildings right up here in the center, right?
Right here.
If the hotel parking was not there, is there enough parking for those?
Yes.
Are you compliant?
Yes.
So, they don't need to come over to the parking of the hotel to make a...
No. And the hotel is actually designed on its own separate lot and could be under separate ownership and operate independently of the residential, and that's intentional. We didn't want to have to make the non-residential and the residential areas depend on each other. There is a shared access driveway for site access, and that's part of reducing one of the driveway accesses to Wooddrift, and we also have an emergency access connecting the two, but other than that, they're completely independent.
The applicant willing to, as a condition of approval, designate that the hotel parking will be signed, hotel parking only?
We'll have directional signs.
No, I'm talking about literally the parking spaces. You know, just concerned about overflow from the apartments taking up parts of the hotel space and vice versa.
Right.
So, we would like some delineation to those parking spaces are subject to the properties only.
Here's some other, I'll say, engineering points of interest that I think help to address your concern. Is there, there's this area of landscaping between the row of parking immediately adjacent to the apartments and the row of parking immediately adjacent to the hotel, and there's a pretty significant grade change there, to the point where we're close to warning a retaining wall, so it's not something that can easily be, you know...
People walk.
Walking through from one parking space to another, and then we could, we're providing a landscape buffer in there. And then, to the point of, Mr. Bernstein, we could provide signage at our entrance driveways to specifically highlight to people that these are hotel guests parking only.
And the applicant would agree to a signage satisfactory to your planner and engineer?
Yes.
Okay. With regards to the design waivers, as Mr. O'Grohanic indicated, since basically two-thirds of the project are already developed and constructed, the waivers we're requesting and have built into the design of this amended plan are consistent with those previously approved waivers with regards to loading, parking space size, location of trash enclosures, the crosswalks, and the architectural overlay design standards. But I'd like to point out, with regards to sidewalks, there wasn't a sidewalk proposed on the previously approved plan along the entire length of Wooddrift, just down by where the retail was proposed. What's been requested of us is to provide that sidewalk connection from basically our on-site turnabout down to Route 206, and we would comply with that suggestion. And then, we have a trash enclosure, I'll say, close to the front of the parking for the hotel, which I'm highlighting now, near Route 206. That's actually in a similar location to where the trash enclosure was for the retail. It's a masonry enclosure. We're not proposing gates. That's what is throughout the community already, but what we would endeavor to do to the satisfaction of your professionals is enhance the landscape screening. Right now, there's minimal landscaping proposed around those trash enclosures, so we would enhance that to thoroughly screen it from Route 206 and Wooddrift. And then, there's a second trash enclosure that's up near the turnabout, which is at the end of a row of parking, which, again, is in a similar location to where a trash enclosure was proposed as part of the prior...
Are you, Mike?
I don't think that's me. It's me?
Try it again. Might have been.
Don't move, just like that.
I got it. So, with regards to that trash enclosure, we're proposing another, you know, trash enclosure on the proposed plan, I'll say, a little further off of Wooddrift, which provides for some green space between the back of the trash enclosure and Wooddrift, and what we would suggest is that we enhance the landscaping around that trash enclosure as well. We, since receiving the review memorandums, we explored other alternatives for trash enclosures. With regards to the five new apartment buildings, we have a trash enclosure on the southern end of that complex, and felt appropriate to have one on the north end, so there wasn't really an opportunity that became apparent to us for an alternate location for that trash enclosure. We would offer that we would beef up that landscaping to provide for that full screen so you couldn't see the trash enclosure from Wooddrift, and you're looking at the back of the trash enclosure, which we felt was also another advantage to, you know, providing for screening to keep that from the view of the public. And then, same with the trash enclosure on the west side of the hotel parking area. We have trash enclosures on the east side of the hotel parking area, and perhaps another trash enclosure could be added there, but because part of the hotel is a 4,000-square-foot restaurant, which would be on the east, or, excuse me, to the west end of that building facing Route 206, we thought it appropriate to have a trash enclosure on that end of the parking area, so we would hope that the landscaping screening to keep it from view would adequately address those concerns.
And you're going to submit those screening plans?
Correct.
At some point?
To your satisfaction, and Mr. Euro's prepared by our landscape-licensed architect.
You said there's no gates on them?
That's correct.
They're just open. Is there a reason for that?
That's the way the rest of the community is.
That's not a good... That's not a good answer. Is there any?
Well, I didn't finish.
Go ahead.
And our-
I've been waiting to say that.
I should stop. Our applicant, who manages other complexes like this, it's their experience that the gates become damaged, not used, stay open most of the time. So their preference would be not to provide the gate and maintain the interior of the trash enclosure. And there are dumpsters in that that are sealed with lids in a respectable manner so that the gate really is not necessary to screen an unpleasant view.
Respectable dumpsters, you're talking about?
No, no, I'm saying that, like, trash wouldn't be outside the trash enclosures.
Hopefully.
They would be-
But these are wide open to anybody that's on site. You can see the dumpsters.
That's correct.
There's no gates.
That's correct.
And your reason for doing that is because that's the way all the rest of them are?
That's the first answer I gave you. And then the second part of that is because, as I said, our client's experience is that the gates stay open and get damaged and are in disrepair most of the time.
Not to belabor this too much, but the dumpsters that serve the restaurant, they could be held accountable for closing the gates, could they not?
Oh, yeah.
As opposed to, I could understand a tenant might not bother with the gate.
Correct.
But the one that services the restaurant and hotel at least might have a gate on it.
Yeah. And that would be a detail we'd add to the plan to the professionals' satisfaction.
And you did say you were going to run the sidewalk all the way down to 206?
Correct.
Thank you.
Right.
That's it for now.
I know the other night we also talked about lighting. All the lighting will be LED.
Correct.
Comment on that.
Right. And we've received some comments from your professionals regarding the lighting, and we'd address them to their satisfaction. And we're endeavoring to provide a lighting plan that's consistent with the same type of fixture and illumination patterns as the previously approved plan and the remaining portions of the project that are already built. So it's the same look fixture.
Can we just jump back, Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Go ahead.
Let's back to pedestrian circulation again for a minute. All right, you're extending the sidewalk down to 206, but I'm referring to comment number five on my memo of November 7th. I said the plan sheet also indicates the location and design of crosswalks throughout the development. In particular, how will the new residential buildings access the clubhouse and other onsite amenities? There doesn't appear to be any pedestrian connection. You'd have to walk through the parking lots to get to the clubhouse. Is that correct?
Well, the sidewalk right now, there's a sidewalk around three-quarters of this, or actually around the entire roundabout. The sidewalk that you're suggesting to be added, which would provide for that connection, what we can do is take from that sidewalk on Woodriff into our project right by where I'm highlighting now, the one driveway we have to the residential. Then if you look at the illustration now, there's a sidewalk around this entire building here that comes close to Woodriff that we can connect to that new sidewalk that runs along Woodriff.
You provide some crosswalks?
We, our proposal is to do the same type of striped crosswalks that are in the existing community. We weren't planning to do something different and inconsistent with the rest of the community, like a stamped concrete or anything like that, Mr. Maskey.
Okay. Lastly, on circulation, have you been in touch with the Board of Education about the school bus stop?
Yes. Yeah, actually, because the property currently has occupants, there is an existing school bus stop rate where I'm highlighting now in front of the rec facility. And that is in close proximity to these new residents, so they'd use that same bus stop.
Has the Board of Ed ever signed off on that?
No, we haven't had them sign off on it. We can go to them and say, we'll use the same bus stop. We're not proposing a new bus stop. We don't suggest or feel that there would be a need for any change in that existing bus stop.
Yeah, I'm thinking with the additional 130 units, though, they might want to just take another look at it.
We can, we can talk to them.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Mr. Forkas, maybe you're the person to ask, but as far as the, I'll call it the roundabout in front of the proposed hotel?
The drop-off.
The drop-off.
Correct.
And then, so if someone's going there to check in, I'm assuming that's the lobby, they would have to walk in and then get back in their car and drive all the way around to the back of the hotel to park?
That's correct. We looked at ways to-
Does that seem like convenient?
Well, let me, let me, part of the design also, if you, you look at the back of the hotel, there's an area where there's no parking, which basically the lobby goes from the front circular drop-off, where I have the hand highlighted now on the exhibit, through the middle of the hotel and directly to the back of the hotel. So there actually is, you know, I'll say, a secondary opportunity for pickup and drop-off at the rear of the hotel as well. So we thought the front hotel was more a matter of convenience and statement of presence, but not necessarily, you know, an absolute issue for functioning of the hotel.
I just, you only have, what, four parking, three parking spots in front there and two handicap spots? Is that what's allocated?
Correct.
For quote-unquote drop-off or check-in type deal?
Well, there's, again, behind the back of the hotel in a straight-on area, there's no parking, and then immediately adjacent to that, there's another set of handicap parking spaces at the back. So that could be another, I'll say, secondary or optional check-in, checkout location.
The parking in the front, though, is that intended to be long-term, or is that just short-term for drop-off?
Right, right.
And that'll be designated as such?
Right. Yeah, if somebody were to come in and visit the lobby or drop off somebody, it's not, it's not extended parking. It's just a temporary standing. And this is a good, I think, segue, segue to the other third review memorandum we received on Monday from the township's fire marshal, included several bullet points. I immediately went and met with Mr. Wintiger on Tuesday morning. Saw me there?
I did.
We went over the plan. He gave me his comments. We've actually already made those changes to the plan, and I met with Mr. Wintiger again this morning. And what I'd report to the board is that, and this is, I think, I'll slip, flip to my, my, my up to four, A4. This is an exhibit of the fire truck turning template exhibit, Plan Sheet 17. It's revised 121219. This is what I went over with Mr. Wintiger this morning. And what I want to report to the board is that all the comments in his memorandum can be addressed to his satisfaction. I believe this plan already represents that. And none of those changes to address his comments required significant changes to the plan. For example, in the front, where that drop-off is, we were just talking about, we've softened the arc or radius there to provide for truck turning template through that area as well. There would be no parking, emergency vehicle only on either side of that one dedicated drop-off and pickup area immediately in front of the hotel access door. The other item that we've made changes to on the plan is similar to another location within this development. We provided for an accessway for emergency vehicles if and when they ever needed it between the apartment buildings, and that would be accomplished by mountable curb at the islands on the access driveway from the parking. And then, not a paved road down between the apartment buildings, but basically a dual sidewalk. So we took the one sidewalk, pulled it apart into two dual sidewalks, side by side, which would be constructed to support an emergency vehicle, but for all intents and purposes on a daily basis would look like standard pedestrian accessways. And if I go back to Exhibit 1, you'll see a similar setup to that on the northerly section of the property where there's a dual sidewalk between apartment buildings. And Mr. Wintiger was satisfied with those proposed changes. There's been other, I'll say, subtle changes we made for him with regards to an additional fire hydrant behind the hotel, some relocation of fire department connections immediately adjacent to other proposed fire hydrants. So there was no issues that could not be addressed to Mr. Wintiger's satisfaction. And that's the December 9th memorandum.
Excuse me, Mike. With that, wouldn't it be easier if you used the egg crate-type pavers that allowed the grass to grow through as opposed to having them trying to line up the tires on two individual sidewalk paths?
We could talk to Mr. Wintiger about that. I think, and we actually are using that at another location. This location where we have the connection between the two parking areas from the non-residential and residential areas, we're using the, you know, the concrete, the grass pavers, if you will, with a gated, you know, so it's emergency access only, so pedestrian, you know, other vehicles wouldn't go through there, which is often a problem. We can talk to Mr. Wintiger if he prefers something else, but we need the walkway, too, down that for pedestrians.
It's the back.
Right, it's the back of the buildings. So aesthetically, we want it, you know, nicely.
Understood.
Grass, yeah.
I'm just looking at another, as opposed to trying to, maybe you can do a single sidewalk like you originally proposed, but do make those honeycomb, high-density poly, you know, those plastic honeycomb chambers that are meant for vehicle access and emergency access vehicles, and you have a grassed area.
We could talk to Mr. Wintiger. Another, another example that comes to mind is the Autton Road School. There actually is an emergency access lane between the athletic fields where the fireworks are annually and the building that's basically a buried bed of stone, which would support the vehicle, but on the surface, it entirely looks like grass. So we can work that out with Mr. Wintiger.
Thank you.
Mr. Ford, just to make sure, the applicant is not proposing an overhang in the front of the hotel?
No, there's not a portico share proposed there. Mr. Wintiger asked that same question. If, you know, a portico share were considered, it would have to be above the truck. But actually, let me go back to the last exhibit. That's another reason why we proposed and widened and softened so that the fire truck doesn't have to go all the way. It is me.
It is you.
You got interference in here.
It doesn't have to go right up to the front door of the building. It can use that area beyond the drop-off that's right at the front building. Now I'm afraid to move.
Let's just switch. Let's just use the wired one. Maybe put that one up in there.
Here. Thank you.
Should I get paid for?
It doesn't mean it. Oh, yeah, it does.
There you go. Rock star.
Now I'm not wireless anymore. I don't have to worry about the power going out, so.
Good. Quick question, just to clarify, on the basin, I know you indicated it was originally over-engineered, but I just want to be clear, you're not making any modifications to reduce its capacity? You're just leaving it as is, but it, there's enough capacity to deal with the changes that you're proposing?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah. And then with regards to landscaping, we had a couple of comments about landscaping. As I said earlier, we're maintaining the originally approved buffer on our south, and then within the project, we would comply with the tree count requirement for the number of parking spaces. There was a slight discrepancy in our plan. We'll address that. And with regards to tree mitigation, that was an issue that was addressed as part of the prior application, and we'll adhere to that prior approval condition.
Mr. Euros, do you have any other issues for Mr. Ford on this? Just provide some testimony on the impacts that this revised design will have, just on the overall traffic circulation, or maybe that would be for your traffic engineer.
I can-
And it's, and it's just its impacts to 206, if there are any impacts. I know there's no increase in trips or anything, but just, just a quick overview of the revised layout and its impacts to the circulation throughout the entire site and versus the 206.
Okay. Well, the, the access driveways to Route 206 don't change. We've reduced one of the proposed access points to Woodriff, so internally, really should have better circulation because we have more controlled access points. We've made connections to the existing residential parking to the west, or excuse me, to the east or rear of the site and the apartments that are under construction. The remaining portion of the site, the two-thirds that's under construction, won't change. The roundabout internally will continue to function as previously designed. We're not making any changes to that. And then we have the signalized intersection along our frontage on Route 206 on the southerly driveway, and we're not proposing any changes to those turning movements, generally with the reduction in the retail 20,000 square feet being eliminated. And as the traffic engineer's statement indicates, the peak hours only increased by about five trips in the AM peak hour, which is de minimis, and there's a pretty significant reduction in the peak hour traffic with the change.
Thank you.
I got one other. I don't know if it was brought up, but I did remember reading in the notes, maybe Mr. Maskey's notes, was there any proposed charging stations or anything like that for the hotel?
Right now, on the plans, we don't have that proposed, and we didn't discuss that. We'll do that.
Charging stations for cars?
For cars, yes.
Yeah, for electric cars.
I don't know, Mr. Ford, whether it's going to be you or someone else testifying. Do you have Mr. Euro's memo of December the 9th?
Yes.
If you'll take a look at Pages 6 and 7, is somebody going to testify at the F1 and F9?
With regards to the operation of the restaurant?
Yeah.
That'd be others.
That'd be others.
And F9?
Dual ladies.
Same thing, right. Hours of operation.
For the purpose of engineering, is there going to be a separate entrance proposed for the restaurant, or is it going to be accessed through the hotel?
I'll let the architect speak to the building.
Okay.
If I could just maybe, again, highlighting the relief, the one proposed sign that's being proposed is, that's part of this application, is just south of the Woodriff driveway access off of Route 206. And the reason for the relief is, if you've been by the site now, there's actually like a leasing sign that's like a V-shaped sign. We're proposing a permanent monument sign that would be a similar V-shaped sign. And because the V is greater than 45 degrees, basically a 90-degree V, it's considered technically by ordinance to be two signs. If you, if you took those two portions of the V and sandwiched them together, such that you couldn't stand in one place and see both sides, then it would be a complying sign. The planner will speak to the variance, but our rationale there is because of the frontage and the location of the sign, it seemed like the V-shaped sign was a better, you know, aspects of visibility for driving north and south on Route 206. But that's, that's the reason for that. That's why that variance is necessary, because it's not because of the size of the sign, it's because you can, because of the shape of the sign and it being a V more than 45 degrees, you could stand directly in front of it on 206 and see both sides.
I have another landscaping question. I'm not sure if you addressed it. The comment 4.3 on Page 4 of my memo.
The 10?
Parking lots with 11 or more spaces, minimum two-inch deciduous trees shall be planted for every 10 parking spaces within planting islands. The parking lot around the hotel, it's somewhere in a range of 100 spaces or so. I don't see any breaks, any tree breaks, any islands in there.
Yeah. Yeah, what we, we're not proposing islands separating parking spaces. Right now, in the existing portion of the project, we have rows of parking over 10 spaces in a row, close to 40. So we've been consistent with that, with regards, so we'd ask for, you know, consistent with that relief, but with regards to the number of trees per space, we'll comply with that and provide it at the boundary or the periphery of the, of the parking area. We just didn't want to break up the parking spaces, that's.
You're looking for a waiver?
Correct.
And why didn't you want to break up the parking spaces?
Well, we're overparked on the hotel now, but we felt it was a good planning element to, because I'll say, you know, maybe the architect will speak to this, but there is a potential that a successful restaurant and hotel would need all the parking we're proposing, so we'd rather not back ourselves into a position where we don't have enough parking, so that's why we've not broken it up with islands and provided more parking than what we need.
Okay. There was one other. Play it for me.
Did you, did you have anything else, Mr. Maskey?
No, that's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so at this point, we'll need a motion to open to public.
It's moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, so at this, at this moment, we will open to the public. Anyone from the public can come up to the mic, if you want to state your name and address, and if you have any specific questions for the applicant's engineer, the applicant is also going to have other professionals come up through the evening. You're going to have a traffic consultant and an architect, so if you can, try to address any questions to the engineer at this point. So if anybody wants to come up, now would be the time.
Just state your name and address, please.
My name is Steve Rose, and I live at 20 Bella Circle in Hillsborough. I'm at the 55 and Old Door, Gateway Royce Brook community, and I am a member of the board at, one of the members of the board at Gateway Royce Brook. My concern is, major concern is the safety and security of our community. We are supposed to be a gated community. At this point right now, it's not a fully gated community. We have too many access points in our community that people can get in and cars can get in without being checked at a gate in front of our community. My concern going forward is also the building of this Brookhaven development that's going to be wide open and what they're going to do to secure, make more of a security and safety issue for our community going forward. That's my major, one of my major concerns. Thank you.
Is that something that Mr. Ford can answer, Mr. O'Gradyneck, or?
I don't, I'm not sure, there was a concern, but I'm not sure there was a question.
Yeah.
But as I understand it, the, it's, the community to the east, there is no direct driveway to have access to that community to the east, other than an emergency access driveway that was part of the prior approval, and we're not proposing to change that. It wouldn't be converted to a regular driveway. It would maintain it as a emergency access driveway. In fact, trying to convert that to a regular driveway would cause issues with our DOT access, because it would potentially direct more traffic to those intersections. So, and then with regards to the buffers and landscaping between us and our neighbors to the east, there's no changes there. In fact, that's part of the application, or part of the project approval that's not being changed as, as part of this amended application. It's, all those buildings are either constructed and occupied or under-constructed construction along our, our east portion of our project, so.
Please just state your, your name and address, please.
Tom Carr, 3 July Court. Same HOA that Steve is a member of. Let me explain a bit more about our concern. What we have right now, coming through your current development here, are construction vehicles intended for our development, and using that in the off-hours. They're not supposed to be in our development until 7 o'clock. The builder has tried to talk to these people, they don't listen, so they come through there at all hours. So that's our current problem. The problem we're addressing here with you folks today is what happens during construction of these apartments when your contractors start using our development to get out of there and avoid 206 traffic during rush hour? They cut through the existing road, they cut through our development, and these are private roads. It's turned over to us to maintain. It's very easy to get out of our development because the, as Steve pointed out, we are a gated community, but the exit gate opens up by motion. So there's no FOB, there's no code that's required to exit. So we're concerned with what happens to the construction, what's going to, how are you going to keep the construction vehicles from coming through our development? Number one. Number two, when it's complete, how are you going to keep the residents there from coming through our development, accessing Falcon Road and then going out to Sunnymead, these will be our development, when they want to avoid the bottleneck and the traffic that's going to ensue at 206 during rush hour?
The permanent condition that's proposed is emergency access only. That would be a chain like the town's standard, bollards, that would only be able to be unlocked by the police or fire emergency vehicles, and this, so that's a permanent solution. During construction, I think some method of gating that now, perhaps even that, implementing that permanent solution now with just the emergency gate would, would solve this gentleman's concern. So there would be no ability to access between the two developments.
I mean, can we get a commitment on that before approval?
Just want to be sure, would that suffice?
As long as the vehicles are forbidden, I think, I think that's what we're ready for.
There really, there shouldn't be access now. This is not a thoroughfare. This is an emergency access only, and frankly, if the builder at Sunnymead is allowing that to occur, it's in violation of the current approvals.
They should gate it on your side.
Well, I mean.
They should put a chain on your side. Why wouldn't you?
Yeah, well, the builders should, yeah.
Your builder should.
It's the same builder.
This road right here?
And we would close it.
What I'm asking, what I'm asking is that you require the builder to do it.
We'll make that commitment.
Well, I'm just saying, on your end or either end or in the middle, I mean.
It's the same builder of both communities.
Yeah, I just want to be clear, I think you said you would commit to that, just want to make sure everybody heard it on the record, that's all.
Thank you.
When? When? When would be, when is the question?
30 days.
Good evening. My name is Patrick Baldoni. I live at 51 Klein Road in Gateway as well, and I just want to make a comment on the use of that road right now. If you look at the road, it's a lot of dirt. They're hauling dump trucks full of dirt between the two jobs, plus the contractors going back and forth, so, and I don't know how fair that is, and it is an obvious shortcut. If anybody's in that area trying to get from one part to the other part, getting around a light, trying to get someplace faster, there'd be a lot of interest in using that road, and I guess the question is, how important is it? Is it really necessary to connect us that way? Now, I know they don't have a lot of frontage on 206 for big jobs, but is it required that they have that driveway there? Because they Belgium blocked it up and, you know, it looks like it's going to be a real road.
Mr. You're still talking about the same road?
Yes.
Okay, I, I think what the applicant committed to is they'll, they'll gate that off or chain it off.
I've asked the applicant's counsel to speak to his client about a timeframe.
Okay. I, but I think we'll, I think we'll get a.
It's active.
We understand.
And it's a good shortcut.
30 days from resolution, 30 days from approval?
Resolution.
30 days from resolution. So just wait one sec, we're just, I think we're.
So the proposal is 30 days after the resolution, if, if this board is to pass it, we'll get a, we'll get a chain.
Okay.
With bollards.
So 30 days from, 30 days from, it'll be in the, in the approval. Correct.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else?
Of course.
Susan Gulliford, Hunt Club Road. Oh, that's the one I wanted to see, the comparison.
It's the same, it's the same one.
Okay, I just want to make sure I understand, you're deleting the 20,000 square feet of retail and replacing it with housing units?
That's correct.
Why?
Because that's part of the settlement agreement that allowed the hotel to get built where it's being proposed.
The hotel was previously supposed to be there, correct?
Supposed to be in the back, along with the retail, and to get the hotel built, the parties entered into agreement where the hotel would get built and the 130 residential units would get built, which includes affordable housing for the township.
Why did the, why did the, sorry, why did the applicant want to delete the retail? Do they have retail in other complexes that they manage?
I don't think that's a question for Mr. Ford. Maybe a question for Mr. Hiller.
Okay. The detention pond in the front that you're making no change, if that hotel is sold, that would be on a different lot than the hotel lot. The lot would still have a maintenance, the hotel would still have a maintenance agreement that would still tie in with that?
Actually, no. I believe the, the residential community would retain responsibility for that stormwater, any, any best practice management for that detention basin.
So they would have to have a legal agreement with the hotel?
Correct. They would, we would have some type of easement that would, you know, permit that drainage.
Okay.
Applicant willing to agree to that as a condition?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. The height of the proposed new buildings, the housing units as opposed to retail, is that going to be the same? Will it be more visible to the people who, for example, live around there?
The architect is going to be our next witness.
Okay, thank you. This is another subdivision that, the most recent one, I think it was in 2017.
I think it was 16.
Okay. The only reason for the subdivision is because of the flipping of the apartment, of the hotel to the front?
And to separate the non-residential from the residential on its own law.
Then why not tie in that part of the residential with the previous residential?
There is an existing lot line there now, and we elected just to leave it. And again, it's, it also avails the financing opportunities for this section of the project with respect to separate financing for other sections of the project. So it's really just a matter of business and financing. The overall amenities and all the parking are shared. There's not, you're not going to see the lot line.
Okay, because the 2017 minutes from those, from that subdivision stated that that was done for financing reasons also.
That's correct.
Okay. The extended stay hotel, what is, what's the definition, or how, how permanent are the residents of the extended stay hotel?
That's not an engineering question. I'm the engineer.
Oh, yes. Hey, you answered all of those. You're so good at it.
To answer your question, our architect will detail that, but it will be a nightly rental. Rent by the night.
Okay. At the Environmental Commission, Mr. Ford, you said the trees are gone already. That was just a result of the 2012, when it was still all one unit and everything was just clear-cut?
Well, the, the site is under construction now, and the, this area was slated for construction, and there already has been disturbance of this area. It's actually used to support some of the construction on going on the other portions of the site. So yes, all the, all the clearing's already been, already taken place.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else from the public for the engineer? Okay, we're going to take a five-minute break. We will resume at about a quarter of. Okay, we're back in session. Mr. O'Gradyneck, you have the next witness, please?
Yes, my next witness I asked to introduce is Dave Minno with Minno and Wasco, architects and planners. Dave, can you give just a?
My name is David J. Minno, M-I-N-N-O.
Could you go over qualifications, Mr. O'Gradyneck?
Yes, and can you give the board the benefit of your educational and professional licensure?
Sure. My educational background is I have a master of architecture from the University of Pennsylvania. I've been a registered architect since 1979. I'm a principal at Minno and Wasco Architects and Planners. We're about an 85-person architecture and planning firm based in Lambertville with offices in Newark, and much of my experience has been residentially based, but we do have expertise in hotel design. We're the architect for the Marriott Residence Inn in Jersey City. We just finished the Wave Resort Hotel in Long Branch.
You got to talk up, David.
I'm sorry?
You need to talk up.
I'm sorry.
I'm getting a signal from behind.
Okay, I'm sorry. We just finished the Wave Hotel, Wave Resort Hotel in Long Branch, New Jersey, and we completed the Element Hotel, which is a Sheraton flag in Harrison, New Jersey, and I've been qualified before this board several times.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. So what I'd like to do is go through the architecture, first of all, the residential portion of the project, and we'll move to the first exhibit. So the first exhibit is Building A. Building A represents three of the residential buildings in the site plan. These are the three, three-story buildings that are more on the southern end of that residential component, and they are buildings that have entryways on both of the principal sides of the building, and they come into a common hallway that accesses five units on each side. There's 10 units on each floor, and we have a.
Just for the record, we're going to mark this as A5. Can you describe what, the last revision date?
Well, maybe.
Does the board have copies of this? Let's start with that.
I believe so, yeah. What I'd like to do, if I could, is give you a copy of this presentation and mark that as one exhibit. Is that fine?
Fine, A5.
I'll give you a flash drive, so soon you'll have that. Okay, so this is the floor plan that was submitted in the set, as well as the rest of the drawings. What I want to run through here, and this will be covering all the residential product, is I just wanted to run through the overall unit mix for the project. And this is a inclusionary housing project, as you know, and one of the things we've been able to do is integrate all of the affordable units throughout this new community of five buildings. So there's not a separate affordable building. They're all generally integrated throughout the building. So for the total of the 130 dwelling units here, we have, in terms of the market rate units, we're all one-bedroom units and 104 units. And then for the affordable housing component, we have five one-bedroom units, 15 two-bedroom units, and six three-bedroom units. So this matches up with the affordable housing standards for percentage of ones, twos, and threes. So as we walk through these buildings, the two stairways on each side give access and fire access to the building from both sides, and one, if you remember the site plan, one side of this building faces the parking, the other side faces the green space, so residents can access either side of those, those buildings. This next plan that I just put up is the. This next plan that I just put up is the typical upper-level plan, so this would represent the plan for both the second and third floor of the building, and it's very similar to the first floor, it repeats and moves up, but we've, again, got a complete mix of market rate and affordable product.
Mr. Minno, the one-bedrooms are true one-bedrooms, correct? No dens?
That's correct.
Thank you.
The elevations that we've shown are consistent with the rest of the community in this area that's already been constructed, both in terms of materials and color. So if you look at the typical front elevation for the building, we use brick as the base material, stepping up from one to two stories in certain areas, and then we, on the upper level, we moved to a horizontal siding. We have divided light windows, turn gable roofs, we have some standing seam roof that's shown in the barn red color up at the top of the roof, and that's also shown in the eaves on these gables. So each of the eaves has a little color section to it to highlight those gables. We have covered entries at the base for the entries to the building, and each unit has a balcony within the community. The side elevation is typical to both ends of the building, and the front elevation could be right, really either side, could be the side facing the parking lot or the side facing the open space. So the next exhibit that I have are the Building B floor plans, which look surprisingly similar to you, though there's a slightly different mix within the buildings. There are also 10 units per floor, but these buildings are only two stories in height. And these buildings are the ones that are, face the southwest, and they face our good neighbors in the single-family neighborhood behind on Partridge, and I remember when we were working on the approvals for the overall development years ago, you know, there was a tacit agreement, even though it's not the ordinance, to design two-story buildings toward our single-family neighbors. So this was, I think, a commitment to that, we're continuing to show that two-story building closest to Partridge. The second floor of this building is similar to the first, and I don't want to repeat myself, so it has very similar qualities. So here's the elevations for this building. The top elevation would represent either side, either long side of the building, and again, it's a shortened version of what you just saw in the three-story building with brick at the first level and horizontal siding and the same gable treatment up above, and then the end elevation. These are the elevation, the bottom elevation would be facing to the southwest and facing our good neighbors. So you can see it's a very low scale with intervening landscaping between us and the property line. What I'd like to do now is move in and show you the hotel, and this is a very exciting project, and I think it's a, it's a use that's well-needed in Hillsborough as an extended stay facility. And what I'd like to do is run you through the first floor plan of this building. So the building is set up as it would face the Route 206, so at the bottom of the sheet would be 206, so the short end is facing, and then the entry courtyard is this area on the left-hand corner of the building. So our main drop-off and formal entry is right here at the main lobby, but as our engineer mentioned, we do have a very major entry from the parking lot to the rear into the lobby. You can see it's a through-lobby situation with the front desk located, reception desk located right here. And this is a very high-quality space, in fact, if you look at the rendering over there on the wall, that's a rendering from the interior design firm.
We're going to mark that A6?
A6, we can mark that A6. That would be, what we're trying to show here is the high-quality finishes and the type of clientele that we're trying to attract here. An extended-stay hotel is slightly different than a regular motel or hotel in that we expect some of the tenants to be there, or some of the people who check in to have longer stays, and generally, this tends to serve the business community quite a bit, so that people who are coming into the area to train for a week or two weeks like this type of situation of having almost a small furnished unit where they can have a kitchenette and really live there. They don't have to eat out every meal, they can spend some time there, and it's really set up for people who want to work on Wi-Fi and do business within their unit. As we get up to the upper floors, I'll explain the different types and sizes, we have four different basic types and styles of the individual units within there. But sticking with the ground floor, we have a fairly large gym space here, men's and ladies' room, and then our 4,000-square-foot restaurant space faces Route 206, and this is on purpose to attract both outside clientele as well as the hotel guests, and because we're over 100 rooms, we would seek a liquor license for this facility so that we could serve alcohol. The 100-room limit is the, sort of, the baseline for a hotel license, and we would do that here. And then the area in the back-right corner of the plan is really back of house, we have inside laundry facilities, we have our management offices, staff room, and those types of facilities, and some mechanical space located in that back-right-hand corner. And then the wing on the left in the back of the building is a residential wing with our basic dwelling units, and we have three types here, three types of hotel rooms. The As are basic studios, rather small rooms, and then the Bs are a small suite, and the Cs are basically an elongated hotel room with double-bed configuration, two queen-bed configuration.
Mr. Minno, just, do you know what the seating capacity would be in the restaurant?
I don't, because we really haven't laid out the floor plan and the kitchen and the bar area specifically, but we took the parking requirement based off the ordinance for restaurant The next plan I just put up is the second through fourth floors, so this is, this plan repeats on those three floors, and with the addition of the three units I showed you, we also have a suite with a separate bedroom with the D-units on this wing that faces Route 206. So these are our largest units and really a full-suite type of situation. We continue in the area that on the ground floor was the employee area, we have more B or our junior suites in that location. Very typical, our elevators are located in the garage of the building here, two elevators. These are elevators that are large enough to accommodate a gurney for ambulance service, and they're certainly large enough for the hotel guests to use. I wanted to show you the elevations of the building. So the elevation here that's labeled the rear elevation, which is the one on the top, is actually the one that faces the parking lot on the southwest side of the building. And here you see, we, in the center of the building on the ground floor, we have a major entry, this is our through-lobby entrance. So I think because of the nature of the building being extended stay, people are staying there longer than one-night stays, so the engineer was fielding questions about the drop-off in the front. People may come there originally, their first time, and check in and park, but once they learn the building, if they're staying there multiple days or even a few weeks, they would tend to go right into that rear parking lot and enter through that rear door. And then on the left-hand side, we also have an entry here directly from that parking lot to the restaurant space. So we have, there was a question about how the restaurant was accessed, we have both access from the lobby space coming down the hallway into the restaurant, internal to the hotel building, and then we, for outside guests, we have this outdoor entry on the southwest corner of the building.
Mr. Minno, can I ask one question regarding the two entrances way? Are they going to be, obviously, you need to have one public access that's open all the time, so is the back access going to be a key card only for security reasons?
After certain hours, it would be.
So they would be forced to come in as a new tenant in the front for the first?
Typically, that's the way, you really, it's against.
I just want to make sure that that was for the record.
Sure. It's against, if you've ever checked in late in a hotel, the desk, typically during the day, there might be two desk staff, and at night, it drops to one, and you really want them, in case they're going back to the office to get something, you want that back door controlled for residents only with a key fob, so that's the way it would be set up. That's a good question. The elevation on the bottom of the sheet here is labeled front elevation, and this is the elevation that would have our main entry off of the courtyard where the drop-off would be, and we do have a sign at the very top on the fourth level indicating the name there, and I'll show you another sign location that faces 206. These signs, I think, are 60 square feet in area appropriate for the size and scale of the building. And while we're here, and the materials are consistent on all four sides of the building, basically, we have on the base of the building, we have a cast stone material, and then in the middle of the building, in the center portion, we have brick, and then the other portions of the building, we have a cementitious fiber cement panel located in this area and at the top. So I think in the design guidelines, you know, it mentions good design, having a base, a middle, and a top, and we've done that in this building. We also have some very interesting features on the hip roof here, we have some bracketed features that look like they are supporting that roof, that adds a little bit, excuse me, that adds a little bit of design to the flavor of the building, and that's continued around on all four sides. I want to show you the other two elevations, and the elevation on the top is the one that does face directly Route 206, so this end cap is the, on the right-hand side is the portion that is closest to 206, and you see a lot of glass down here at the base, this is our restaurant space, we want that to be visible and vibrant and activated for people who would be driving up the entry road coming into the project. And we have another sign located up here on the third level, and again, this is 60 square feet, these are raised aluminum letters with acrylic faces that would be internally lit, and that would give the name of the hotel in that location. And then you're looking, the left-hand portion of this is fairly far away from you, it's set back in that courtyard, in the entry courtyard. And finally, this would be the, the bottom elevation would be the elevation that would be facing east or northeast, and this would be facing the residential units that would be directly behind. And again, the materials are similar, we've kept the, this, in this case, we have a two-tone brick facade and then the fiber cement board panels around the window areas. It's a very glassy, open building, it has traditional roots, but it has a bit of a contemporary flair to it. I think it's going to be a well-received building in this area and one that'll support the business community here as well as the residential homes. I think that's all that I had on positive testimony, and I'd be happy to take your questions and your professionals' questions.
I have two. On the restaurant, you have some doors showing, opening to the outside, you have two double doors and a single door? Are you have plans to put a patio or something out there or anything like that for outside seating?
Yes, they're shown a short space there off of the sidewalk, but our hope would be that in good weather, we could do some cafe dining in that location toward 206, and that would have awning tables and the like, and that would be, you know, up through the shoulder seasons where we have good weather, and then in the wintertime, those tables would go away.
I don't see any proposed planned landscaping, I think, for a patio, so that would need to be added.
Yeah, I would have to refer that back to the civil engineering landscape architect for that comment.
Okay, and my second question is just a question on, obviously, there is no, you do have a lobby, but I don't see any sort of meeting space or something that if you want to have your tenants have a meeting, there's no place for them to congregate or whatever?
Yeah, it's, we do not have that type of, it's not meant to be a convention hotel or one that can accommodate large meetings. I think at all hours, the restaurant space would be available for some smaller business meetings or conferences, but it's not intended to be supportive in that way of a conference center.
I guess I would ask why, because the original application would indicate they would have a conference space?
Right now, that's not planned in this facility.
Anybody else on the board?
I have a few.
Mr. Maske?
Yeah, as mentioned earlier about the electric charging stations in the parking lot, but just to expand on the green technology comment, will the buildings be Energy Star compliant, basically, for appliances and HVAC systems?
They will be.
And would it qualify, not that you would have to, but would it qualify for any level of LEED certification?
Yeah, it probably would, most of, most of both the hotel buildings and residential buildings we do, just on the basis of what we typically do and what I know Premier does on their building, they would reach a basic LEED certification. The reason most develop, we did a lot of LEED certifications, starting 15 years ago for about the first five to eight years, and we have LEED specialists in our office. Now, the reason people don't go for the LEED certification is it costs about $200,000 to go through the certification process, and most developers don't choose to do that. Some of them get less expensive certifications, Green Globes or NHB Green, but most of them don't spend the money to get the LEED certification, but these buildings would be very close to a LEED certified building.
Okay. Did you get a chance to go through the architectural and site design overlay zone comments in my memo?
I did.
Are you requesting any waivers for any of those standards?
I think the only one really that I could identify, or maybe, there might be two, but I'm referring to your memo, page six of eight.
Yes.
Down at the bottom, 11B, and this is the part about the shall not exceed, individual buildings with ASD overlays on, shall not exceed 100 feet in length along any wall, roof, or footprint plane. Building fronts wider than 40 feet as viewed from the public realm shall be modified to break the facade. I believe that this, we meet this in full with residential buildings, but I don't believe the hotel was contemplated when this was written. So we do have legs that are longer, even though they are broken in plan, I can give you an illustration of that, but they're longer than that 100 feet. Let me see if I, I'm sorry, this is sensitive, let me do it this way. If you look at this elevation here, which is set back quite a bit from Route 206, we do have some minor breaks in that facade, but the total length of that is well over 100 feet. The front facade, this closest point to the Route 206 is 62 feet in width. When you look at the elevation, though, we have, I'm sorry, at the top elevation there, we've tried to break that elevation at this point with a little bit of offset from the brick and create a shadow line, but essentially, this facade is about 62 feet long where the 40-foot requirement on facing Route 206 would be the requirement. So technically, we would need a waiver, but in my opinion, I don't think these standards were written for a major public building like this. The only other issue would be at the top of page seven, and again, the encouraged roof types, we are an encouraged roof type, we have a hip roof on the hotel and gable roofs on the residential, but there were some slopes indicated, and the minimum pitch, I think, for hip roofs is six on 12, and we are three on 12, and one of the reasons is we're trying to minimize the height of this building. It is a four-story building, and we're trying to minimize the overall height of the structure, so to get to the six and 12 would add several feet to the height of that building. So I think that area, we would need some relief on that. So I think that area, we would need some relief on that specific pitch requirement. I think all the rest of the standards, I can affirm that we meet.
Thank you.
What was the elevation of the roof line?
The height of the roof?
Height of the roof.
Yeah. Hang on one sec. You're talking about the hotel now?
It was like 50, 55 feet?
Yeah, I believe it's 55 feet.
That's, is that different for a commercial than hotel or?
There's a specific height allowance for the hotel versus the residential.
Okay.
The hotel, maximum hotel height is 55. They're proposing 55.
Right.
Okay. Mr. Euro, you have any, anything? Okay. Mr. Bernstein?
Mr. Minow, out of curiosity, approximately how many employees do, does the hotel believe it will need on an ongoing basis?
Well, yeah, there's different hours of service. The peak hour for hotels is really the morning hours. We would have the staff there in the kitchen preparing breakfast. We would have staff there who are at the front desk, and we would have staff who are starting to service the rooms. And we think that that would be approximately 14 staff people at the peak. As the day goes on, the staff decreases. And into the evening, it's really generally only two people who would be in the building as staff in the overnight hours. And that's your peak demand for parking later in the evening as people come back from either business or whatever they're doing in the area. So that's when the parking lot fills up with hotel guests.
I'm assuming there is no knowledge at this time of the operational hours of the restaurant?
I don't have that knowledge at this point, no.
At this point, anybody from the public have any questions for the applicant's architect? If you do, come on forward, state your name and address.
Susan Gulliford-Hunt Club wrote, I'm not sure if this is for the architect. You said the height of the building is 55 feet. The entire development is maintaining the buffer on the south. I guess that would be partridge area. Will this building still be very visible to our current residents?
Maybe, I don't know how to get back to the site plan. Maybe I could, you could help me with that? I could bring that up. Actually, this doesn't, do you have something that shows a little bit more of the lot lines on this side like this plan? Okay. Yeah, I think if you're referring to the height of the hotel building located here, what you have is that the Partridge Drive development, that road sort of curves, I guess, to the southwest as it comes into that development. And this property line, which is all a wooded area, creates a very large sort of wedge-shaped buffer to the hotel. And then, with our additional plantings along that parking lot, we think we give a good buffer to the residential.
Okay, thank you. I have one other question, but it's about our ordinance, so it wouldn't apply to you. Thank you.
Anybody else with questions for the architect? No other questions? Mr. Grodnik, you have a next witness?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My next witness is Art Bernard. Art Bernard and Associates out of Lamberville.
Yes. Have to be sworn in.
You swear in this morning, you give tonight, it's the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Using the mic, please, explain anything.
My name is Art Bernard. A-R-T-B-E-R-N-A-R-D.
Could you please state your qualifications, Mr. Bernard?
Sure. I am the managing member of my own firm. I have a master's in city and regional planning from Rutgers University. I'm a licensed professional planner with over 40 years of experience in land use planning and affordable housing. For eight and a half of those years, I served the Council on Affordable Housing, leaving as its executive director in 1994. Since then, I've served as a consulting planner for 27 municipalities around the state. I've testified on behalf of private sector clients before local boards all over the state, as well as in most of the state's court visanages as an expert witness. I've served the Superior Court as special master in seven municipalities and served as an expert witness in the Middlesex County and Mercer County fair share trials.
Thank you.
I think we're good.
I think we're good, yeah.
And I've been here about four times this year.
Understood.
In getting ready for this evening's testimony, I reviewed your settlement agreement with the applicant, the 2018 settlement agreement and your zoning ordinance and the applicant's plan for the property, Mr. Maske's report, the municipal land use law. I've been out to the site on several occasions. And I'm here tonight because we require two variances that I think Mr. Grodnik referred to accurately as more technical in nature. The first is a parking variance that's caused by a subdivision line, sole purposes for financing purposes. But the subdivision that line creates a technical variance in the, in the housing proposed on Lot 30.01 will not have enough parking on that lot. And so, the, some of the residents in the units that are located in Lot 30.01 will have to park to the lot that's just to the east or to the top path of the graphic that's over your heads. And the applicant plans to solve that problem by having cross easements so that people can clearly park in that area. And you can see it's convenient parking adjacent to the, to the buildings. And the other variance is for the hotel sign that's located just south of Woodruff Boulevard. There's a sign there now that's kind of V-shaped. And we're proposing a sign that has the same message on both sides, but we, we need relief because the two faces of the sign are not on the same plane. They're again kind of V-shaped. And your ordinance treats them as, they're two signs. So the reason the applicant is proposing the angled sign faces is to maximize the visibility, which would provide for safer turning movements into Woodruff Boulevard. And I think the presentation of the sign would be probably most effective to drivers heading north on 206. As you're coming north, there's a tree line that kind of screens Woodruff Boulevard a little bit, and people may not see that sign until the last second. And the angle may give them a little bit longer to look at the sign. In terms of the, oh, in terms of the financing, the subdivision line especially, the settlement includes a definition of the development that actually speaks of the needs for subdivisions for financing purposes. And it also provides for cooperation in granting minor variances, providing no relief is requested as to the use or, or an increased density. This is the same type of cooperation that's generally required for inclusionary developments. And the agreement, again, as section 4F, says that the developer shall be entitled to the normal protections of inclusionary developments, which involves cooperation with minor variances. So with that background, I think these variances could easily be approved based on the C2 criteria, where the proposal advances various purposes of the municipal land use law and the benefits of the proposal outweigh the detriment. And with C2 variance, the courts have directed boards, when weighing the benefits and the detriments, to consider the benefits of the entire project and not just the benefits of the relief. And I think this application clearly advances Purpose A of the municipal land use law, which involves encouraging the appropriate use of land. Purpose C, which is to promote appropriate population densities. And Purpose G, which is to provide sufficient space for a variety of uses, including residential uses. And when you read each of those, those purposes from front to back, there are two main thoughts. There's the appropriate use of land and addressing the needs of New Jersey citizens. And in terms of the appropriate use of land, the governing body in this board has already determined that this is an appropriate use of land by entering into the settlement agreement and rezoning the property. The benefits of this proposal to New Jersey citizens are clear in that the proposal's making a major contribution to the township's affordable housing obligation. It's providing rental housing for those households in New Jersey who don't need or want to purchase their own home. It's providing safe, affordable housing for very low, low, and moderate income households. And it's also providing a hotel that township has wanted for quite some time. The benefit of the parking relief is that it provides parking in a convenient location for its residents. The benefit of the signage is that it promotes the visibility of the sign advertising the hotel. The presentation of the sign advances Purpose H of the municipal land use law, including the free flow of traffic. The more visible signage will help motorists make safer traffic movements into the site. In terms, so that's my positive proofs for the two variances. I also have to provide the negative proofs in term, including the impact on the public good. Again, I think that the parking relief is a technical variance caused by the subdivision line for financing purposes. Those types of financing subdivisions were anticipated by the settlement agreement. The subdivision line really has no impact on how the site plan works. And the applicant has more than sufficient parking for the apartments proposed. Similarly, the sign of relief is more of a technical variance. It's a, it's one sign with one message. The sign faces just aren't on the same plane. I think that the public will view the two signs as really one sign. I see no substantial detriment to the zone plan from any of this relief. The uses are permitted. For the most part, we comply with all the bulk standards. So I see the relief as more fine tuning of the zone plan rather than a substantial break with your zoning principles. And in addition, the relief helps implement your settlement agreement regarding the site. And since the application includes affordable housing, affordable housing always strengthens your, your zone plan and making, when you're complying with your affordable housing obligation. So in summary, I find that the proposal advances the purposes of the municipal land use law, that the benefits of the proposal and the relief are clear, that there's no substantial detriment to the public good or the zone plan. I find that the benefits of the proposal substantially outweigh the detriments of granting the relief. And I would urge the board to grant the relief.
I have nothing further for the witness.
Any comments from the board?
Just regarding the sign, so you seem to be indicating that, that the V shape will essentially provide a safety measure?
Yes, I think that's the argument. Yes, I think it'd be slightly more visible than a perpendicular sign there and it, and just make it a little bit more safer.
Thank you.
At this time, does anybody have any questions from the public for Mr. Bernard? No? Okay. All right, thank you. Mr. Grodnik?
We have no further witnesses for tonight's application.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'd just like to underscore one comment. It's a comment in my memo that was really a repeat of the initial 2016 subdivision. But I think it's, it just needs to be repeated. It has to do with cross-access to adjoining properties. As we know, it's three lots. They're requesting to do four, but it's basically the same project. So it's really heavily dependent on cross-access easements and mutual agreements. And I'll just read off the paper here. For the use and maintenance of roads, parking, landscaping, utilities, recreation facilities, et cetera, the applicant needs to confirm that all necessary easements and agreements will be maintained. So in other words, it's going to be four different lots on this track, but it needs to be managed as one. And we just want to have that confirmed again that that will remain the case.
Yeah, the applicant will comply with any, any type of language to be reviewed by your, by your attorney.
Mr. Grodnik, are you planning on presenting any testimony relative to how this application is going to be constructed? I.e.?
There's no phasing plan.
Can you just clarify, when you say no phasing?
The intent is to build the residential and the hotel.
Together?
Yes.
I don't know if there's, if Mr. Hiller wants to answer these questions and bring them up, but I still have some, some questions and issues based on what the original agreement was based on this hotel. It had 130 rooms and 120,000 square feet with some conference space. And now, you've got down to 103 rooms at 77,000 square feet and no conference space. Though, Mr., the applicant is asking for variance and all sorts of forgiveness on different things, and yet seems to be wanting to minimize the hotel that we, as you've just put it, so drastically asked for. And why this board should consider that application based on the good faith that they put into a hotel that really doesn't meet what the original agreement was.
The, the size of the hotel is in compliance with the ordinance. It was 100 to 130 rooms. So we're, we're in compliance with the parameter set.
Well, part of it is. There was supposed to be some conference space, but there isn't.
It's not, a conference center is not proposed, as our architect had testified.
I heard him. Just wanted to ask why? What was the thought process?
Have to be sworn in.
Jeffrey Hiller with the applicant. Yes, I do. Jeffrey Hiller.
Why don't we give Mr. Hiller's, I won't say qualifications, but what's your, what's your role with Premier?
Senior Vice President and Head of Development. So the, the hotel and kind of getting to where we've gotten today has been a long process, as I know it's been for the board and the town. From our perspective, we've, we've, for years now, been trying to see the hotel to fruition. We've met with various developers whose specialty is hotels. And we've met with various national brands such as Marriott, Hilton, Hyatt, and IHG, all the big brands. What, what we've kind of learned over the years about this location in Hillsborough is that suburban hotels live and die by their corporate business. So if you have a large corporation that you're very close to, your hotel usually does pretty well. If you're not very close to a large corporations and there are other hotels closer to them, your hotel often suffers. So what we've learned is kind of in the Bridgewater, Branchburg corridor, there's a lot of hotels that have been built and are still being built right now. And there's a lot of large multinational corporations that sustain those hotels. The proof is, if you search even online at hotel rates in the area here, Monday to Thursday rates are often approximately 50% higher than weekend or holiday rates. Because people are traveling, because... are traveling, because their business is paying for them to be there for a meeting or training or whatever it is. So how we ended up with the design of this hotel is we've spoken to all these brands, and they've all kind of said, "Well, Hillsborough, your location there, it's kind of close to Bridgewater, it's kind of close to everything that's going on there, but it's not Bridgewater, and there's all these other new competition being built closer to those businesses." So, you know, it's not really right for a residence in by Marriott, or it's not really right for Hyatt Place or whatever the brands are right now. And so, kind of the advice that we've gotten from them, from other developers that I have a relationship with who specialize in hotels, is if you're going to thrive here, you have to attract corporate business. So the way we're doing that is we've designed the hotel with the right room type and suite type to try to attract people who, instead of staying at what's being built right now in Branchburg and Bridgewater, would come and stay here, building really nice rooms, large, with kitchenettes, and different facilities for -- on suite with people who might be traveling every week or often to this area will find us and kind of say, you know, "I'll drive the extra seven minutes, I really like my room there, I really like being there." In terms of a conference center per se, what we've been told over and over again is, with the Marriott in Bridgewater and the new AC Hotel being built in Bridgewater right now, anyone who's going to be doing a corporate-type conference is probably going to be going to one of those full-service hotels. So dedicating a large amount of square footage for a conference center in this property, we were told, would not make sense, that people are going to come to you because you give them the best housing option, and then we thought the restaurant was a good accessory use for those people who would be staying there, the other people who are in our residential community, and hopefully to attract people from the township at large. If you're interested in adding some conference rooms or things like that, I'm sure we could try to rework the lobby floor plan when we go to construction drawings to try to accommodate some meeting spaces. I'm not -- but when I think conference center, I'm thinking of, you know, a place where people might throw a very large event, and we've been told over and over again that that would kind of not do well because of the other options that are being built right now in terms of full-service hotels, if that makes sense.
I hear what you're saying, Mr. Hiller, and I understand the quandary of where Hillsborough is compared to things. So I guess what I was looking -- first of all, do you have a prospective tenant to run the hotel?
Currently?
Yes.
We're planning to build it and manage it ourselves.
Okay. But I think any hotel I've traveled in, mostly every hotel I've used has some sort of meeting room that if you want to have a group of people that are in the same hotel for training, want to get to a common area that can be private, would be something that would be beneficial?
And I think that that's -- honestly, I think that that's good advice, and I think that we should look at our lobby plan, and as we go into construction drawings, try to accommodate a meeting space for that.
And the other thing that I've -- in fact, I had a conversation with someone last night that Hillsborough is drastically short on a large area where if someone wanted to throw a party or some sort of function in this town, there is very little inventory in this town to have that. Used to be the firehouses and the fire halls would hold these, these have all now disappeared. So they have to leave town and go to Bridgewater or wherever if they want to have some sort of large in-house meeting or party. I talked to a fundraiser last night that wanted to have 200, look for a place to put 200 people to have a fundraiser for -- they used to run, do at the Polish Falcon Camp. Make a long story short, they can't have anymore. So I think there is an advantage that in this town and this area needs because there is no large area of rooms that will host anything like that.
I think that the restaurant area in this hotel could accommodate, I don't know if it could accommodate 200 people, but it could probably accommodate a large, it would accommodate a large party.
Well, I guess that was part of the questions on what the restaurant hours were, if it's actually a true restaurant, or if it's just like a bed and breakfast type, you know, lunch or whatever, or if it's going to be all day long or attract outside people, you don't want to close the restaurant and then lose that clientele because now you're shutting it down. But I --
I mean, it depends on the type of event, obviously, right?
Sure. Sometimes you can buy out the restaurant for a night, I understand.
If you're bringing 100 people, yeah.
Right. Okay. And my last question, I think, was part of the mayor's, is that we are not looking for a one or the other build here. We want this to be built in conjunction of, and I don't want to have to put a restriction on it to say you cannot build one without the other, though we might, you know, it's up to the boards to decision that, but by no way do we want to see the four apartments built before even a shovel breaks into the ground in this hotel, because that's not going to be acceptable.
And we've heard that loud and clear, and Mr. Bernstein has been in all of the meetings when we were negotiating the settlement agreement, and it was made very clear that, you know, the town wants to see the hotel done. And that's why, while not every little aspect that you're bringing up is maybe addressed, we're kind of trying to do the best with all the information that we've gotten to build something that's going to be viable and that's going to be something that Hillsborough and we as the developers will be proud of.
Is the applicant willing to place as a condition on the record a point in which the hotel must start construction?
No.
Then I will point out, as Mr. Hiller has indicated, it is the desire, and I would say more than a desire, that before we see five residential buildings built and a subdivided lot with a vacant hotel site, that that is not the intention of this agreement, and that the township will take every opportunity to ensure that that occurs in terms of permits, construction agreements and the like. If the applicant is not going to set it forth in terms of a condition, you're on notice and it's going to be part of the record that we've made multiple accommodations on this site. Ms. Gulliford even raised one of those conditions tonight. This hotel needs to get built and needs to get built before 130 residential units get built on a site that's got more than 400 residential units right now. And I think I've been consistent on that statement from day one, 11 years ago.
I think the issue, and I concur with Sean, I think we understand that it's certainly we're not in the middle of a large corporate complex, so we get that, you know, having massive conference areas are probably not quite what you would expect in this suburban type area. That being said, I think, you know, we'd appreciate, as we get to the construction drawings, that we start to look at at least the opportunity to have first-floor meeting spaces, areas where there could be training or, you know, corporate meeting groups, or it doesn't have to be a 200-person event, but there should be some space to have meeting capacity in the hotel. I think that was always part of the intention, and, you know, we'd like to see some of that as we get to the construction phase. So if you're saying that's going to, you'll work with us on that. We appreciate that. And then the issue of, you know, I appreciate you committing to no phasing, we understand that, but there has to be some meat behind that, that, you know, we don't want to get to the point where five residential buildings are built and then you start with the construction. I know that's, you know, if there's no definition behind phasing, that could be considered as all one phase, you're just doing it in steps. So we just want to make sure we're clear that this is one that we've been targeting for a while, it was part of the original plan. We understand some of the requests that you're making because of the settlement agreement, but this can't be the last piece that ever gets done. We need some meat around how that happens.
And while the applicant is looking relative to the issues that have been raised, I would point out that the magic number is at least 100 hotel rooms. As Mr. Minow has previously discussed, with 100 hotel rooms comes a hotel liquor license, which doesn't happen at less than 100. So while you're reconfiguring construction plans and the like, you're right now at 105. Part of the understanding was this would at least be a 100-unit
Yeah.
...hotel.
Look, we get that 100 is important, we get that.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I guess no questions from the public now.
The retail, just to reiterate why we went from 20,000 to zero?
I mean, that was all part of providing more affordable housing units and making a new residential phase and the entire settlement agreement with the court, and then the hotel remained because it was clear that the township wanted, still wanted that. Thank you.
Okay, at this point, is there any questions for Mr. Hiller? Come up, state your name.
For those who don't know you.
Yeah.
How'd I guess?
Susan Gulliford, Hunt Club Road. I have one question. Since you're taking the lot off that would have the hotel in it, since you're subdividing that, if you were to sell that lot to someone else, could we still press them to build a hotel, or could they say it's out of their hands?
The zoning ordinance would govern the use and requires the hotel to be approved.
But how would we?
As would the settlement agreement.
But how would we press? This would be a person who can throw up their hands and say, "I'm not part of that developer, I bought this lot."
That's what we pay lawyers for.
Oh, okay.
If I may, any approvals and conditions that said were run with the land, doesn't matter who owns it in the end, whatever's been approved and required by the ordinance would apply to whomever.
They'd have to come in and seek a change in the use, and I don't think that's going to go too far right now.
Okay. Also, a comment, I guess, on your marketing on this. On a lot of the local social media, you have a lot of people who are having, their family, friends, whatever, people come in and they don't want them to stay at the Days Inn. And a lot of times, they are looking for something a little more upscale. So you might have something there in this area that you might not have in a corporate area so much. I have a question about ordinance 219, the 2006 ordinance that created this. Can I ask that now, or do I? I just have a question about the first purpose of this ordinance, creating Green Village. Everything that we've looked at has the affordable housing, the multifamily, the hotel, the office, and the restaurant uses, but that ordinance and its first purpose states retail. Would that ordinance need to be changed at any point since it says "and" gets covered?
No. Subsequent ordinances have amended it.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else from the public at this time? With the close to the public?
Motion to close.
Some.
Okay. Mr. Bernstein?
Now that we have no further testimony, what we're looking at, Mr. Julian, is approval for Green Village Brookhaven Loft Hotel, file number 19 PB17 MS/MSPV, block 141 lots 30.01, 30.02, and 30.03, formerly block 141 lot 30 on Route 206. The applicant is seeking preliminary and final major subdivision, amended preliminary and final site plan approval, see bulk variance and waivers to subdivide the property from three lots to four lots of the extended stay suites. Hotel site is located on its own proposed lot 30.04 and to construct an additional 130 new residential dwelling units on the remainder of lot 30.01, housed within five buildings and associated parking and improvements, a property located in GV Green Village Zone in the ASD Architectural Site Design Overlay District. And the delineation of the units within the residential buildings is testified to by Mr. Minow. 104 one-bedroom market rate units, 26 affordable housing units with the allocation of one, two, and three bedrooms in accordance with the Uniform Housing Affordability Controls, or UAC. All of the conditions set forth herein, the record in terms of the building of the site, any agreements made, and the agreements, I assume, and stop me if I'm wrong, Mr. O'Gronnik, of your client, have any and all recommendations from Mr. Euro, Mr. Maskey, Mr. Winiger, and anyone else who has provided recommendations for his sale. Is that correct?
That's correct.
I have one question, Eric. So with regards to any of the design changes on the plan for the hotel, is that something that has to be reviewed by us prior to approval?
All changes to the design will have to be reviewed and approved. And as the board is well aware, it hasn't been that long ago since last week, we had an applicant come here with a formal approval, who when they came back through construction and plan review, required a revisit to this board for certain agreements to be formalized. That was Hillsborough 206 holdings. And if necessary, I am sure that Mr. Maskey will require same.
Okay. Understood, Mr. O'Gronnik?
So just to be clear, we're going to, not if it's, we're going to require that.
Correct.
The parties have indicated they are going to require rezoning. If you want them to come back prior to on the hotel, then this is the moment.
Well, I'm not sure they need to come back to the board, but I think we want...
We are going to provide formal review of the plans by the engineer and the planning departments to ensure that they are in compliance with the ordinance as well as the requests and agreements of the parties relative to the meeting space and related items, which may then require some reconfiguration.
As long as we've got a municipal review and sign off, I think.
Yes.
You agree? You okay with that?
I think they understand the spirit of what we're looking for.
Which may require some reconfiguration proposal as to the rooms.
So if it's, if they have to come back, they have to come back, but if they can do it.
Well, I'm just saying, it's going to require reconfiguration.
Just for the board's benefit, again, the 206 holding experience, as you know, there are certain changes that are made, be field changes or construction changes, that are allowed to be approved administratively by my office and the Township Engineers Office. It's kind of, I wouldn't say it's totally subjective, but there comes a moment, as it did with 206, where we just don't feel comfortable that the changes are of such a nature that they start going beyond what the board has agreed to or what the board understands, in which case we would say, "No, you have to go back to the board for a full hearing the way you did with 206." If we feel, on the other hand, that what they're proposing, the revised floor plan, is still within the spirit and intent of the board, we could do it administratively. But we would definitely not hesitate to send them back to the full board if we felt they weren't carrying out your wishes.
And perhaps with the caveat, we won't go under 100 rooms, and there would be potential to be some configuration changes on the first floor with respect to the meeting room space.
Or, yes.
Yeah, I mean, that'll be the planning office's decision to make.
But that will be one of the conditions.
Yeah. And we just...
Before our resolution comes up, I just want to review the waivers with Mr. O'Gronnik, just so we have them all on the record. There were two variances involved. One was the, had to do with parking for the residential because of the subdivision. The other variance had to do with signage. There were two waivers for the parking space, undersized parking spaces and aisles for the hotel, a waiver for the loading space, a waiver for tree islands in the parking lot, a waiver for enhanced crosswalks, a waiver for the trash enclosure being in front of the building instead of in the rear of the building. I don't believe there was a hose connection at the trash enclosures, that would be an additional waiver. A waiver from the ASDO standard related to proportion scale and massing that was B5 in the ASDO standards and C1B, a waiver had to do with the roof types, both of which were testified to by the architect. I believe that's all of them.
That's what I have. I do note you had mentioned signage illumination.
No, I mean, having two sign... No, I mean, having two signs, basically two signs instead of one on the freestanding sign.
Okay. There's no signage illumination?
Well, I-
ASDO issues?
I think we'll take another look at the lighting on the signage when you submit the plans.
Okay.
Anybody else? Okay, can I have a roll call, please?
Motion.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I have a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Scobbo?
Yes.
Peasen?
Yes.
Swiggen?
Yes.
Committee of the party?
Just say that I hope we don't have to come back here again, because I was on that chair when this all started a while ago, but if we do what we're saying, it'd be a good project, and I'll say yes.
Mayor Delphord?
Yes.
Vice Chair Jordan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next meeting is going to be on January 9th, 2020. That's the reorg meeting, which will start at 7:00 PM, and then the regular meeting will start at 7:30 PM. At this moment, can I have a motion for an adjournment?
Before you do that, Mr. Chairman, I don't know who will or will not be on the board next year, but for those of you who are returning, there is currently a business meeting set for January the 23rd. We are going to need that meeting, if nothing more than to hopefully bless an ordinance change regarding another, on campus, related to Judge Miller's decision. In order to meet the requirements, we're going to have to do a meeting, probably a short one, on the business meeting night. So heads up for those of you who are still around.
Motion adjourned. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned.